Get through the checkout lines, it was fabulous. So all you that left, thank you. We're glad to have you back. But that is one of my favorite weeks. Full agenda tonight. Looks like everybody's here. So sit back and enjoy yourself, if you would. We will start out with our pledge of allegiance. We have some scouts joining us. I believe they're going to, they're looking at their merit badge tonight. Part of your, well, what you have to do, though, is come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And after that, let's see, I'll run down the line. Jim Ake, would you please bless us? Say a prayer for everybody after we, after we do that? And so if you would, all rise, please. Scouts, front and center. Front and center, gentlemen. Please lead us.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Just been saved. In many ways, our chaplain just arrived.
Alright, there you go.
If you would, please lead us in prayers.
I can do that.
Alright.
Heavenly Father, we thank for the chance to be here today to gather together what we ask for wisdom, wisdom for these men and women, or that as we look to the future, decisions to be made, the decisions would continue to push forward a high level of excellence, moral character that our great city has been founded upon, or that we would not sacrifice for immediate, what you intend for longevity. So, Lord, may you be honored and glorified by everything that's said in that prayer in Jesus Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. This is Dan, Dan Minton, one of our chaplains. I'm sure Joel will discuss with him how the Lord always showed up on time.
Not in all cases.
President, Dr. Keen, it's your meeting, sir.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Joe Edwards.
Here.
Bob Horkey.
Here.
Mark Keen.
Here.
Jim Ake.
Here.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Here.
Steve Hoover.
Present.
Chuck Lehman.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. There are no changes to the agenda. So I'll just make one, one brief announcement. Starting in January, we were televising, are recording these meetings. So we have a camera that is down here and a camera that shows the information being presented. So this, if, if technology works right, this will be uploaded and tomorrow will be on the city's website. On the agenda page is where you can find it and stream it from, from there. So if you want to review this or share with anybody, we do record it now. With that, let's move to approval of the minutes. I do know there were some changes made to the minutes, but I think they're in good shape now. Is that correct, Cindy? Did you notice that?
Yes.
Changes were made? Okay. So I need a motion to approve the adj, the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Cindy Spoljerick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? By Steve Hoover. We'll do this by voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, so we'll move on to the claims. Do we have a motion to approve claims?
So moved.
You make moves to approve claims, is there a second?
Second.
Bob Horkey had, I think was a half a second sooner, so.
Split second.
Second by Bob Horkey. Any questions about any of the items on the docket, on the claims docket? Saying none, again, a voice vote for this. All in favor of approving claims, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous vote, too. We do have three special presentations tonight. So first one, and I don't know who's introducing this, but Danny Carroll, the executive director of Heart and Soul Clinic. Is there an intro for Danny?
I don't think I need to.
I think you're, you're on with no intro.
I'm okay with that. And we're having some technical difficulties, so I'm gonna, and what would be this presentation to you? And first, just want to say thank you very much for having me and for the honor to represent the Heart and Soul Free Clinic. This year, Heart and Soul is celebrating its 10-year anniversary, which it's hard to believe that just right next door where it was founded, that 10 years later, here we are standing before you to say thank you, because the clinic would not exist if it were not for the support of the city of Westfield and also its elected officials who have joined with us and partnered with us to see the clinic's success. 10 years ago, when the Heart and Soul was founded, it was founded with the idea to provide the highest quality health care to our uninsured and underinsured neighbors in Hamilton County and the surrounding areas. And you may be wondering, why do we need a free health clinic in Hamilton County? And maybe even, why do we need three of them in Hamilton County? But the truth is that there are a little over 30,000 residents in Hamilton County that do not have health insurance. And when you step back and then add on top of that those who are underinsured, those who have massive deductibles that, and, and families of four and five, that when the cooties start passing around and each one has to go to the doctor and pay the copay, it can start adding up. And so when you take that 30,000 residents and you add on top of that those who are also un- underinsured, that number just rises exponentially. And so we have three free clinics in Hamilton County. And one of the things I like to talk about when it comes to the, our other free clinics with Trinity Free Clinic and Hope Free Clinic is that we're not in competition, because at any of our highest capacities in operating, we would still not be able to put a dent into that number. And so we are striving to work towards being able to provide that health care to those who are uninsured. There's a personal impact that happens for those who are uninsured. In 2017, non-elderly uninsured adults were over twice as likely as those with insurance to have problems paying their medical bill, with two-thirds of them that are uninsured unable to pay their medical bills at all. Uninsured adults are more likely to face negative consequences due to their medical bills, such as using up their savings, having difficulty paying for necessities, borrowing money, or having medical bills sent to collection, which creates this ongoing cycle of entrenched poverty. There's also an economic impact that happens, not just for the person that is uninsured, but also the community at large. It's estimated that an uninsured ER visit would cost about $1,233. 15% of all ER visits to a local hospital are from uninsured individuals, which can equal out to about $2.2 million per hospital. In Hamilton County, that means the local hospitals are carrying a weight of $13.2 million each year. But also, those who are insured are impacted by those who are uninsured as well. Premiums for people who are insured rise for about 13, or about $1,300 each year to subsidize those who are uninsured. And so Heart and Soul exists to meet the needs of those individuals and those families that do not have health insurance or who have health insurance but may fall into a lower income bracket and have that high astronomical deductible that they have to meet. And so we do this by three different programs. First, our medical clinic, that we have walk-in and appointment-only clinics available, where we offer childhood vaccinations. Last year, we began to offer physical therapy and also follow-up clinics, to where people who are having chronic issues are able to come and receive care. And that's really important, because you can't just wave a wand and see someone one time and then all of a sudden they have health insurance. And so we're willing to work with individuals who have chronic issues. We also offer sports camp and work physicals, and we have quite a population of young individuals that come and get their sports physicals for us so they can play in sports. And we also offer access to free and reduced prescriptions and lab work. We also have our dental clinic, which provides acute dental care. We have appointment-only clinics as well as follow-up clinics that we established multiple dates in 2019. We do oral hygiene, but also have such an influx of individuals seeking oral hygiene that we have created a partnership with IV Tech that any patient of ours that's seeking a cleaning can go to IV Tech and receive one for free. At the end of last year, we launched mobile, our mobile unit, and this is Hamilton County's, and our first mobile medical unit. And so what we, what we have wanted to do is to take health care to those who lacked transportation. And that's about 25% of that 30,000 individuals who are uninsured do, are not able to access health care because of a lack of transportation. And so we said, instead of demanding that they come to us, let's start working with other organizations where we can take the medical care to them. And so in partnership with the Grace Care Center and Gleaners Mobile Food Pantry, we now travel throughout Hamilton County four to five times a month, offering health care at these food pantries where individuals are picking up food but also are able to receive medical care at the same time. 100% of all of Heart and Soul's services are provided by volunteers. And that's extremely important to understand, that we have a very, very small staff, except we have a very large staff of volunteers. And so we have, from our last calculation, we have about 108 volunteers that come in throughout the year and are working to serve their community. These are medical and dental professionals that are providing care as well as administrative and interpreting staff. In 2015, we at Heart and Soul had 117 patient visits for the year. When you start looking at, from that moment until today, last year, just to give you some context, last year we had over 1,000 patient visits. And so from 2015, every year we have more than doubled what our previous years of patient visits. And so this year, we're actually estimating that we will hit over 2,000 patient visits at Heart and Soul this year. 59% of our patients are female, while 41 are male. We have varying ethnic backgrounds. The largest percentage of individuals that actually come to us, 46% of them are under the age of 18. And 63% fall in the lowest income bracket of Hamilton County, meaning a family of four with $26,000 to, to, to provide for their family. 29% of Hamilton, or of Heart and Soul's patients are actually residents of Westfield, which means that there is a total value provided to the city of Westfield that is estimated to be over $300,000, if you think about that local economic impact. So this year, we're looking to launch three different initiatives. We're beginning to lay the groundwork and we're extremely excited for it. The first one is we're going to expand pediatric dentistry. We're able to start working with pediatric dentists in the area to be able to provide pediatric dentistry. The second is we're working to implement a women's health clinic. We receive probably four to five calls every week for women's health. And then the one that we're most excited about, as if you can rank health care, but we're really excited for and we're laying the groundwork right now, is to be able to offer free mental health services to the residents of Hamilton County and the surrounding area with volunteer psychs, as well as a partnership with the IU School of Social Work to provide licensed therapeutic services. And so Heart and Soul's budget, we receive, we receive income from multiple different areas. We receive foundation grants, in-kind donations. We work with the hospitals, as well as private donations, churches, as well as our fundraising events. And studies have concluded that the return on investment for a community can range from 12 to 1 to 36 to 1. That's dollars saved to dollars spent, depending on the community that the free clinic is operating in. So for every dollar that is donated to a free clinic, it ranges from 12 to $36 that the community is actually being able to save in the local economic, the local economy. Speaking of events, we have a couple, and you are more than welcome to attend. We would love you to. The first one is on April 25th, 2019, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. We are having our ribbon cutting and open house, because in March of last year, we actually moved locations from the house next door and moved across the street, and by the street, I mean the freeway, to the other side of Westfield. In June 2019, we're going to be working with the Hamilton County Polo Club to do a massive event with them. And also, November 2nd, 2019, we are doing our 10-year anniversary gala. We are going to do a black tie event this year, and you are more than welcome to come. And so you may be wondering, why did I ask to come and present to you? Because Heart and Soul is Westfield's. And so we wanted to celebrate with you our 10 years, but also to show you the growth that has taken place that Westfield has also contributed to. And so thank you so much, and we look forward to your continued partnership. Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions from the councilors?
Well, Dan, I would say with a little more enthusiasm, you could be quite successful. Well, thank you. I remember 10 years ago when we began over here in this home and how it has grown. The council supported this. You are a huge part of what we're trying to prove in this community, and that is with organizations like the Heart and Soul, Student Impact, Youth Assistance, that our community can truly solve problems that government cannot do alone. So thank you for all your work. We support you 100%.
Okay, our next presentation, Stacy Loudon, pardon me, Stacy London.
Thank you. I'm Stacy London, and I'm with Breathe Easy Hamilton County. And thank you all for having me here. Part of my job here, I am the Tobacco Prevention and Cessation Coordinator for Hamilton County. So I work with our youth, I go into the schools. And right now, primarily, our education is all about vaping and preventing the use of using, using those products. I go out and work with adults on cessation to make them aware of programs that will help them quit. And then I also do work with community members to protect people from, you know, implement policy for smoke-free air. And a big push for us right now is to make it comprehensive. So it will be no smoking or vaping. So our youth do see that signage as they go into buildings, because right now, when I am educating, they don't see vaping and smoking in the same concept. But really, why I'm here presenting in, in front of you all tonight is a program that we have, that we take youth down to the State House. And they get to meet with their legislators, they get to advocate, and they get to talk to our legislators about things that they're seeing in school. And so I do have two youth that I'm going to call up, and they're, they made a little video. One of the youth made the video, and, and the other one was really involved with, with talking with our legislators. I don't know if our legislator is here this evening. She said she was going to be here. But I do need to publicly recognize Senator Sparts, you know, because without her funding, we couldn't have a program like this. We couldn't be doing, doing things like this. So my main goal next year is, there's a, Cass County takes a whole busload of youth down to the State House. And so I want our program to grow and build here in, in Hamilton County, that, that we are able to get the youth that are interested down there to meet with our legislators. So I'd like to call up Hallie London and Annalee Shoddy. Have them come up and, and, Hallie, if you'll just hit this button down here, take the mouse, hit it right there, and you can start the video. And then you know when to stop it, too. Sound?
It should be, it should be. I'll start it back, just, there you go.
Yeah, it's supposed to have sound. Oops, I'm so sorry.
My bad, I forgot to check the sound.
That's alright. It's alright. You know what, we can let it play, and then if you want to say a few things just about being down here.
We can talk about that.
So these were our youth. We took them down to the Raise It For Health rally. And there were coordinators from across the state that brought people down to the rally. And we talked about the, the cigarette tax. A lot of the youth talked to the legislators about vaping and the, the scenarios that are going on in the, in the high school. And they got to meet, is it still playing, Hal? Did it?
I can start up.
Yeah, so they did get to meet Donna Shidley. And she took, you know, she took time out of her schedule, same with Senator Sparts. They had meetings, they came out and met the youth, and it was just a really good experience for the girls. If you'd like to share, you know, anything you can.
Oh, yeah. So it was, it was really interesting to go down to the State House and see how, and see how people can influence these decisions. And I know that we're like still kids and stuff, but, but I think it was really cool to, to allow the youth to go down there. And it, it shows us that we're still young, but, but we still get to, we still get to have a decision, and we still get to have a voice and a, and a say in what we do. And even if you're not the most passionate person about getting people to stop smoking and all of that, it's still super, super interesting to go down and see how our, our local government works and to see at the state level, because we hear about it at the federal level and schools all the time, but you don't think about it on this level or at the state level. So I thought it was, it was super interesting. We got to meet people that, that agreed with us and that, and they decided to come down and, and try and help influence things in the same way we did, so it was pretty cool. I know in school, we have, like, we talk about smoking and, and now vaping and how horrible it is. And just actually hearing people that care about the topic and not just like spitting out facts at us, it was, it was, it was really interesting, so.
So thank you for allowing us to present this evening. We appreciate it.
Okay, you're going to have a rally, it says here you're going to have a rally at the high school?
Yes, actually, next year. So we just, I just completed my RFA for next year. So hopefully, our funding will come from the state. We find out in May what Hamilton County will receive. And that's a two-year grant cycle. So we've already worked with Westfield High School, and we are going to be having an all-school assembly, where we have a national partner come in, and we'll be an all-day assembly. I think what they were saying is they'll break it down into, to four groups because of just sizing with the school. So our national partner, the Truth Initiative, will come down and voice Indiana. Will come down and, and they'll have a presentation for our youth, and we're looking for fall of next year. So we're really excited about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, if you, if you look at a lot of our statistics, smoking, obesity, families in poverty, the bad news, Indiana doesn't stack up very well. And the good news is, we have groups like this, what you just heard, that are, are seriously working on these programs. And if you'll, if you'll take the time to check out the new initiative that we introduced in January, it's taking place, is the Well-Being Coalition. And this community is looking at an overall-reaching initiative that is forming now. We have, over 150 volunteers have agreed to take part in the Well, Westfield Well-Being Coalition. And this is addressing our physical, our spiritual, our physical, mental, and emotional needs of our entire population. And it's of some very exciting things that this little city is doing. And this is just a small part of it. Stacy, thank you.
Final presentation, we have Hannah Semler, Girl Scout Gold Award Project. Cindy, did you want to say anything about this? Because you're about to start attention.
I've been working with Hannah Semler for quite a while on her, her big final. I think it's going to be your final project, isn't it? With the scout program, you're at the very top. So we're really proud of you here. We don't, we don't see a lot of Girl Scouts make it this far. We see typically the, the Boy Scouts, so this is really exciting.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing me to come and speak about my project. It's been quite a long road, but I'm very proud of what I've done and what I hope to accomplish with my project. So my name is Hannah Semler. I'm 18 years old and a senior in high school. And throughout my journey as a Girl Scout, I've had the opportunity to earn my bronze, silver, and now I've had the opportunity to work on my gold project. For my gold project, I have created a box called the Blessing Box, which is simply a miniature food pantry that allows people to have access to food 24/7 and gives people the necessary foods in times of need. As I'm entering my final months of being a Girl Scout, the idea of earning my gold award has been a very important task that I've been eager to accomplish. For my gold award project, my main mission was to captivate my community with a project that everyone would benefit from and be involved in. With this in mind, I brainstormed ideas of projects that would center around a common issue or topic that affected the everyday lives of individuals in my community. Food is a resource that all people either have or need. Access to food for people in my community is a main reason I created this project. My goal for my project, the Blessing Box, was to give my community easy access to food throughout all times of day. When I began to organize my thoughts on my project, I wanted to create something that would not only benefit my community, but also have a long-lasting impact on the people around me. The issue of hunger is something that affects people every day. With a lack of access to food, our society is struggling with a hunger epidemic. Within the past 10 years, our population has nearly doubled. Schools are increasing in size of students, neighborhoods are popping up everywhere, and with that, the issue comes hunger. With more mouths to feed, there's a less, there is not as much access to food, which creates an epidemic to all the people. The Blessing Box has the idea to give people the easy access to food at all times of day. Even though food pantries around our community give that to people, the Blessing Box is open 24/7 to them. So even if they do simply go to a food pantry to get food, the Blessing Box will be open to them at all hours of the day. My project is intended to give people easy access to food. And in order for my project to run sustainably, I need to find a way to get my community involved. The Blessing Box is entirely run by the citizens of my community. The motto behind the Blessing Box is, "Take what you need and leave what you can." On the other hand, well, the "take what you need" aspect is for the people who are in need of food. So at any time of day, they can go up to the box and take any of the non-perishable food items that are in the box. Some of the items include canned goods, toilet paper, or any toiletries, and boxed rice or cereal. The "leave what you can" aspect invites members of my community to get involved with my project as well. The idea is to inspire those more fortunate in my community to contribute items to place in the box that they feel they need or do not have access to. The cycle is created through the donations of people in my community. My box is placed outside of the city hall, so it would be, which is located at the heart of downtown Westfield. As my project is in the early stages, I plan to make weekly visits to my box to check up on it and restock with any of the necessary food items. As my project continues to reach out to others and the citizens of my community, the project will hopefully run solely on the donations of the public. In the end, the main goal of my project is to inspire people in my community to give back to those in need. Throughout the simple act of donating to the Blessing Box or local food pantries, such as Open Doors, I know that the efforts of people who donate will go a long way. With the Blessing Box in our community, I hope to give those in need easy access to have food and supplies that they need to get through times of difficulty. The simple donations that the people in our community will make for this project can go a long way to help touch the lives of others. I would like to thank Ms. Spoljerick for all your help throughout this whole entire project and for all of you for letting me speak about it.
Thank you, Hannah.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You're a senior? What's your plans?
I plan to attend Ivy League football.
And what are you going to study?
I'm going to major in ballet.
Ballet? Do you promise to return to Westfield and lead the Westfield Ballet? Thank you.
And we'll have one by that time. Okay, on to old business. We have two items of old business that are actually intertwined. So, Pam, we'll let you present on these. We have Resolution 19-103 is the fiscal plan.
Thank you. Before this, before you this evening, for your consideration, I have 100% voluntary annexation and associated fiscal plan for the 37-acre for the thirty-seven acres planned as the Emory Trace subdivision. The public hearing for this item was held at your March eleventh meeting and it is eligible for your adoption this evening. Petitioner is here, they don't plan to present, but if you have any questions, they're available. As am I if you have any of the department. Thank you.
Need a motion on Resolution nineteen dash one oh three?
Move to approve Resolution nineteen dash one oh three.
Move to approve Resolution nineteen one oh three by Steve Hoover, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake. Discussion? No discussion, will the clerk call the roll?
Cindy Spoljerick.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Now that we've approved the fiscal plan, we'll move on to the voluntary annexation ordinance nineteen dash oh seven. Do I have a motion? Move to approve ordinance nineteen oh seven, the one hundred percent voluntary annexation of Emory Trace. Motion of Bob Horkey on nineteen, ordinance nineteen dash one oh seven, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cindy Spoljerick, any discussion? No discussion, clerk call the roll.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Onto new business. Inter-local agreement between Hamilton County and the city of Westfield dealing with youth assistance.
Yes, sir, as you know, we operate with an inter-local agreement with the county to supply probation officer slash Westfield Youth Assistance Director here locally. This inter-local is required so that the operations of both their side and our side of that person operating can be done fiscally responsibly and pursuant to the State Board of Accounts. This comes back every five years, nothing in this has changed from the way we've been operating. Request that you approve it tonight.
Are there any questions regarding this item? Oh Brian? Seeing that, is there a motion to approve the inter-local agreement?
So moved.
Steve Hoover moves to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Horkey. Clerk call the roll.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Yes.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Onto Resolution nineteen dash one oh seven, the establishment of an economic development area and allocation area.
Yes.
Consideration.
Didn't mean to interrupt. This comes through the system from the Plan Commission. And what this resolution does is threefold. Number one, it confirms that the declaratory resolution adopted by the Redevelopment Commission as ratified by the Plan Commission and their order that is, that that plan is pursuant to the comp plan is confirmed for you. Number two, it establishes that this economic development area is in the area and it gives the Redevelopment Commission the opportunity to adopt their confirmatory resolution putting this into practice. This all has to do with the infrastructure improvements on Wheeler Road as came through here for zoning earlier. I've received no questions about this and I can answer any that you have.
I have a motion on Resolution nineteen dash one oh seven. Move to approve Resolution nineteen oh seven, nineteen one oh seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover. Any questions or discussion?
I have something to say. Can someone grab Chris? We can't open our documents, Chris. Sorry. Does anyone know?
Can you just do it up here?
Yeah, but we don't have access to any of our documents in there.
Do you have a question?
One, how long does a sub-allocation area stay in place? Is it only until the debt is satisfied?
Yeah, the sub-allocation area is an economic development area. It's been cut out of the number, and it's tied to the original. So twenty-five years in the time that was established under the circling of laws, under-enabling laws, have abilities, they can stretch that out. This one, I believe, is set at twenty-five years once the first debt's taken out.
So then will that revenue go back to the general TIF after the debt is satisfied?
Well, as a ball test, the income generated from the new building because of this project is charged, and it can be used for the infrastructure every year in that area, more specifically. Every year, a determination is made by the Redevelopment Commission on how much will flow through. By flow through meaning it's captured, but then goes to the underlying taxing powers, libraries, school, county, et cetera. This is not anticipated, or it is not anticipated, that those funds will flow through at any time determinate in the future. This particular funding in this sub-allocation area is based upon the infrastructure which we pay back once the those improvements come in. The faster they come in, the sooner that debt's paid off and the amount of tax that we're able to provide would be allowed. Would happen, or at least the decision would be made. That said, there are also infrastructure needs that may come up in the next twenty-five years, not anticipated now, that may need these funds used for those infrastructure improvements. And any additional debt, of course, would have to go through the entire process again. So you're only approving this project now, and in the future, the options are open for future houses and members of the state.
And this is basically based on the agreement that we specifically asked for in the rezone? Pretty much.
Yes, this is specifically developed, which is, we're deploying the infrastructure, the developers taking all the risk and everything. And the funds that are generated from their development could use today or how it is.
Brian, that leads me to a question, based on your explanation. I believe TIFs are good for twenty-three years?
They're different enabling statutes and they change every year with the passing of the.
Legislation.
Changes in the legislature, but generally, in twenty-five, it used to be thirty, it'd be double limits on the, uh, village law. So it's twenty-five years, once the debt's taken out.
That's, that's this ordinance here.
Yes.
Okay, what I'm talking about is the original TIF district was twenty-three years and I don't think the new laws prevent, allow TIFs to be rolled over like they were in the past, like village.
Not rolled over, but some, some timetables, like happening when the debt's taken out, some are when they're established. This is a sub-allocation area, so it'll come back to the enabling statute under the original.
I guess my, my mental calculation tells me the TIF could expire before this expires.
It could.
So does this expire automatically with the expiration of the TIF?
This will expire when the debt's taken out. Which will be, it's calculated to be considerably sooner than twenty-five years. There are escalating costs for developer and given the incentive to get out of it, the only way to get out of it is with an improvement sense, if money captured, then it's the debt.
Okay. Are there other questions? No other questions, clerk call the roll.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on, Pam, you're up again, I think. We're gonna move on to Resolution nineteen dash one oh five. And we restarted all of our computers, so we're all gonna be staring at the screen, so please bear with us here.
Would you like me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Before you this evening, I have a resolution to approve two new curb cuts on the north side of State Road thirty-two, west of Ditch Road. The State Highway thirty-two overlay district requires that any new curb cuts on State Highway thirty-two be approved by the council. The petitioner is requesting one full access and one right-in, right-out curb cut to serve the Grissmill Crossing Commercial subdivision within the Spring Mill Trails PUD district. The proposal has been reviewed by our city engineer and he is comfortable with the proposal. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion on Resolution nineteen dash one oh five?
I have a question, Prior. That curb cut closest to Ditch Road, am I looking at the north and south? Is it up and down?
Yeah.
Is that, is that copacetic? I mean, it looks like it's awful close to me.
That question was, was brought up and I guess Jeremy Lawler can answer that, who is he?
So that is a right-in, right-out, it's not full access. You're exactly correct, if that was a full-access entrance, it would be far too close to the intersection. NDOT obviously gets the final say-so on that and this is contingent upon their approval as well. But yeah, we have no concerns about a right-in, right-out there.
How about the full access? How, how many feet is that from the other intersection? And you don't, you have no concerns with that either?
No, with it being a signalized intersection, if it were a roundabout, it'd be a little bit different. But yeah, John has evaluated all of these things and, and looked at it, he doesn't have any concerns. That'll be a signalized intersection, as, as we all know, eventually. So a full access there will be essentially a turn lane that turns into the primary turn lane at Ditch Road.
You know, I'm gonna go back to asking for a motion on Resolution nineteen dash one oh five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Joe Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake now. Any other questions or concerns or comments for?
I do, what's the speed limit in that area?
Forty-five.
And what happens a lot of times when the light starts going yellow or people think it's gonna go yellow and they speed up unfortunately right before the light? I'm, I'm kinda concerned, we already have significant safety issues with that intersection. And I know it'll be better once it's signalized, obviously, but adding another full access so close.
It's forty-five from Oak Ridge Road all the way through to, essentially till you get to, on the other side of Eagle Town. This intersection won't be any different than the others.
So they're going at a good clip, though.
Yes, forty-five miles an hour. And we can certainly talk to NDOT about evaluating the speed limit through that area. It was, up until last year, fifty-five through there, and they reduced it to forty-five. It used to turn to fifty-five after you got to pass Spring Mill and it was fifty-five all the way till Eagle Town.
Is there a reason that traffic can't be just forced to use ditch?
If you want my honest opinion, yes, it can, but it's pushing all of that traffic on our local road, which is more maintenance and cost for us, plus more congestion at the signal.
This is still subject to NDOT approval.
Absolutely.
So we're just approving our end of this.
Correct.
And it's a request, more or less.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Do you understand what I'm saying about pushing everything onto our road? So everyone accessing that entire development, what's gonna be to the north of it, would have to go onto Ditch Road and then you have everyone turning left onto the frontage road. Whereas your east-west traffic, the majority of it that is going to there will access off of State Road thirty-two and you won't have our congestion issues on our local roads.
The right-hand turn off of thirty-two, that's a right-hand turn lane, that's a separate lane. So the traffic going forty-five on thirty-two will not be there.
Correct, there'll be a-cell, d-cell lanes there.
In fact, it looks like it, it extends all the way to the intersection, so it's a fairly long.
So as you come through that intersection, there'll be essentially an a-cell, d-cell lane is what we call it. But it'll be a-cell through there to the right end. And then once you get past the right-out, there'll be another acceleration lane all the way to the, to the full access that is at the midpoint, if you would.
I'm fine with the right-in, right-out. In, in most any case, because I think that does alleviate, as long as there are turn lanes. I think that alleviates a lot of problems. I think my biggest concern is the proximity of the full interchange to Ditch Road.
Sure.
And I guess, I mean, we can either say no to that now or we can let NDOT decide what is appropriate for their highway.
I believe the UDO specifically requires approval by both bodies. I would say that NDOT will approve what we see there. So if you have reservations, I would.
Jeremy, was there a consideration at one time to just do a right-out? Only use that as a egress or not? I thought that that came up once.
So eliminating the, the full-access cut completely?
No, 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 that there would, they were just gonna use it as an exit.
So you mean left-in and right-out only? Or just?
I just recall that they were talking about a different configuration there.
I'm, I'm not sure, there's been several plans.
Several plans brought forth, right?
Uh, there, the, every plan that I've ever seen has contemplated a full-access along that stretch in there.
If you want to, I can say, if you wanna picture exactly this condition, look at State Road thirty-two immediately west of Cary Grassy Branch. Westbound. There is a right-in and right-out approximately that distance west of the signal. And approximately that same distance further west is a full-access. And I don't think it's been a.
No, I don't recall being.
Our biggest problem on thirty-two throughout the whole thing is following too closely. It's not intersections, it's people on these things.
Is it anticipated that as further development moves west, that another full-access would be required between ditch and the next major road? I mean, part of our thirty-two overlay was to limit curb cuts on thirty-two.
Right, which is why those standards were put in place. I can't think of the next.
Pam, I think Pam may have some information.
I, I cannot speak for, for all of thirty-two, obviously, that would be Jeremy's department. But within the Spring Mill Trails Planned Unit Development District, they were only permitted, they were limited to one full-access west of Ditch Road. So the petitioner would have to additionally amend the PUD if they wanted another full-access within the zoning district.
Okay, so as it's zoned today, this could be the only full-access.
On this side.
In, okay.
Are there other questions?
Is the petitioner, would you like to comment on that? And is this, is that your anticipation that this would be the only full-access requested on that stretch?
Yeah, good evening. For the record, Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters here this evening on behalf of William Trace Development. As far as further to the west of this, there is a potential that there could be a second full-access. But as Mrs. Howard had noted, that would require amendment to the PUD. So if that's appropriate at that time, we will be back in front of you for that conversation. To Mr. Lawler's point too as well, obviously with the thirty-two overlay, the intent is to minimize curb cuts. And I think the original idea was given the amount of parcels that were along the corridor was to avoid each individual parcel from having its own curb-cut access. But rather, as projects such as this were being coordinated, that the entrance onto thirty-two would be more by design, not just by necessity because of the individual parcels along that frontage. So I think in this case, part of the conversation is, is increasing the circulation of the site so that it's viable. Obviously, no access on the thirty-two will kill pretty much any commercial development in the corridor, but trying to do it more strategically and methodically. Because in this case, with this full-access, what you are doing is you're also decreasing the number of vehicles that would go through the intersection of thirty-two and ditch. As Mr. Lawler said, not only keeping it off of Ditch Road, but when you have vehicles that would turn northbound or turn left into the site, it's not going through the intersection of thirty-two and ditch, making a couple lefts. Rather, you're catching them before they go into the intersection. And then coming out of the development, if they're heading westbound, they're avoiding that, again, that light at thirty-two and ditch because they're allowed to exit on the thirty-two away from the intersection. So it's a combination of, I think, economic viability for the uses that are here, but at the same time also increasing, enhancing the circulation in the area.
Well, as I said, my concern is the full-access, not right-in, right-out. I think it's very efficient and does eliminate a lot of traffic that would other, I mean, if, if everybody that accessed this had to use ditch, in this case, the only, if these were both. if these were both right in, right out, the only traffic that would have to use the light would be eastbound traffic coming out of these uses. They would, if we didn't have a full access intersection, they would have to go to Ditch Road to go east. I don't know, I have some concerns about it with that proximity to the. We certainly don't want, I mean, if traffic gets heavy enough there, ultimately, that would require a light, and then we just, and that's what we were trying to avoid with the thirty-two overlay, was having entrances and traffic lights every few blocks on a, a more of a major thoroughfare.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to, to your comment about people turning left out of there, I find it impractical and hard to believe that people would take that full access and then turn east and go through that ditch signal. I, I think anyone that is going east will go out to the ditch signal and go east. They're not gonna try to cross traffic, sitting at that right, that uncontrolled full access to turn left to go through another light. But I guess my last comment is, if it's the proximity to the signal that you're concerned about, I'm sure the petitioner would evaluate that full access, potentially spread it out. I'm not committing them, obviously, or it's just a suggestion, but.
I guess my preference would be that it be further west, maybe be down at the shown temporary roundabout or something so that it better serves the development to the west. That would be my concern. I, I'd really would prefer not to see two full access intersections in that mile. And if Jesse's already saying that it is a good chance that they'll come back and ask for a second one as further development occurs, that's my concern, I guess.
What are the engineering difficulties if we approve this as a full access now, but knowing something is anticipated further west, that that become ultimately the full access and this reverts to a right in, right out? Engineering difficulties, trying to design it so that it doesn't necessarily only look like it flows as a full in, full out kind of a thing, but eventually could be that if.
You mean converting that full access to a controlled right in, right out later, so you'd have two right in, right outs?
Yeah, how much expense and duplication of efforts?
It's putting in solid medians and doing some other things.
Seems like it could be a fairly simple process, that maybe we would look at this as a initial opportunity to get development going, but as it progresses, we move this bigger amount of traffic to the full interchange further to the west and limit this then?
My, my only other comment to that, and I'll defer to legal, but I don't know that you would have the grounds to be able to require that later, unless it was a condition of that zoning change.
Well, I think I should, that, that was actually gonna be a public road, so ultimately, it would be, it would be the city's determination and/or NDOT's determination down the road to make that change, like they do in any other right-of-way scenario. So Grissmo Road is what's shown there connecting Tournament Trail to thirty-two, that segment would be public. It would be a public road, so you'd have that authority, anyway.
Assuming we held the budget.
Well, and if it's traditional with the majority of the thirty-two right-of-way, that intersection would be controlled by NDOT. So NDOT controls north and south of State Road thirty-two, a couple hundred feet at every intersection.
Does, does this cut, does that single right in, right out, does that service just that one development on the corner? Or is it going to service?
It primarily services the corner. It will be partially shared with the lot also there to the northwest, but it's not a cut-through. It's very similar to what you see down at Speedway, just west of Oak Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Okay, Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Reluctantly, yes, I would like to go on record as recommending that this be the only full access west of here, but we'll deal with that when it comes up, I guess.
Okay, Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Share the reluctance, yes.
I'm sorry?
Share the reluctance, yes.
Okay. Jim Ake?
Yes.
Cindy Speljeric.
This is tough, 'cause I'd like to say no, but NDOT's not gonna like that either. I do, I do agree with everything Steve had to say, reluctantly, yes.
Okay. Martine?
I'm gonna vote yes, but I'm gonna ask a question. Can we have it put into the minutes that the council would like that there be only one full access on this entire development, so that when it comes up again, if there are some new people here, at least there's some sort of a tracking record we can go back to and say, "We said one," and it may be that this becomes a right in, right out, because we're looking at it being someplace else. So at least it's in the minutes. So I'll, I'll vote yes, but I'd like to have that in the minutes.
I'm sorry, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Your comments are duly noted, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, on to Resolution nineteen dash one oh six. Normally, I like to have a motion and a second before discussion, but in this case, I'd like to go ahead and have discussion, because there's, I checked with Matt. Matt's gonna kinda start off by going over this, but there's absolutely no need, I guess, impending urgency that we have to deal with this item tonight. So if we wanna have a discussion and decide we wanna put this off, or however, and I know three of the council, I think Jim, Steve, and Cindy, you all have worked on this, so I'd like to have you all weigh in too, as to where you wanna see this go. So with that in mind, Matt, if you wanna kick it off?
Sure, but before we switch gears, though, just to clarify, your, your note for the record was for the area of the project west of ditch, correct? Okay, thank you, it straddles, so, all right. Pardon me. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. Before you this evening is a resolution pertaining to topsoil replacement standards in the Westfield community. This would apply to both common areas of subdivisions and, and lots themselves. And when I say that, I don't, I'm not just talking about residential, it's really every, all subdivisions. So the, the resolution, if it looks a little different to you, this is not a normal required statutory step. This is a, this is, this resolution pertains to, let me switch gears here. This resolution pertains to part of the city's construction and design standards, which are actually adopted by the Board of Public Works and Safety and administered mostly by the Public Works Department. This proposal was generated in response to a request you received last year from some members of the community that outlined four or five different items they would like you to consider, one of which was a topsoil replacement program within our city. And so, at the time, I think the thinking was that this would be incorporated as part of a Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, which, that, that, that there is one on the agenda tonight. When we started to peel this apart, it, it made sense that it really is a specification in the city's construction specifications. So that's why there are two items, this one's just kind of compartmentalized on its own. This, this does come to you from the Standards Revision Group. The Public Works folks have been involved all along the way and are familiar with this ordinance and understand, you know, what it is. So they have not been left out of the picture at all. The, the resolution as written would memorialize the council's support for the adoption of the attached topsoil replacement standards, and so you'd be making a recommendation to the Board of Public Works and Safety. That, that would be the result of this. The attached standards are really pretty similar to the topsoil replacement standards that we already have on the books that are applicable. The, I think Noblesville has a similar standard. Neither one of the, our communities have rigidly enforced this for years, and frankly, it's a little confusing how to get there. And so that, part of the purpose of all this is to clarify and be transparent, which is, I think that's part of the reason why the Standards Revision Group wanted to have this item presented here in a, in a more public forum, just to be out there, so everybody knows what's going on, so. The, you have received some comments regarding the ordinance here as recently as today, and I would just summarize the, the issues that have been raised, and I don't know that they're very surprising, but I'll summarize them for you if you haven't had a chance to get through them. One has to do with the increase in costs for subdivision lots, and I think they have in mind probably more residential lots, but it would be applicable everywhere. But subdivision lots increase prices, which has. Is this, hello? Hey, all right, sorry about that. The, the attached standards, though, oh, the, the, by increasing the lot costs, it also has a negative impact on affordability, which has been a recently discussed issue among you, so that's kind of the other side of that coin. Also, there's, were several comments that basically amounted to the fact that this would, the cost of complying with these new standards would not be worth the benefits received from, as a community, so that's one of the other comments. One of them, which was kind of interesting, the, that, they don't believe appraisers will recognize the value in these improvements to lots, so when, when going out to finance a home, the appraisal may not reflect the increased cost of providing a lot, the value of the lot. And then lastly, there were several logistical issues as far as like extra work associated, and cost associated with hauling off and hauling on dirt at, at times when it, it hasn't typically been done. So as you mentioned earlier, Mr. President, this ordinance, or this resolution is eligible for your consideration this evening. It does not require a public hearing, but it certainly is, you can certainly have one, and there is no obligation, of course, for you to act on this this evening. If there's any questions, I'll prob, I'm happy to try to respond.
Also questions, comments?
I'd like to comment that this is something that I have heard from community members, that people are very unhappy with the way their lots are left. I, for one, have experienced this multiple times, where you try to do foundation plantings and you run into bricks and concrete blocks and plastic and all kinds of construction debris that was never removed from the site. You also encounter almost exclusively clay, which is very hard to work with. It does not support growth very well, you almost have to supplement any place you wanna make any plantings. I think that, I am certainly, I certainly appreciate the comments that we got today, and they certainly make a lot of sense. I sympathize with those comments, and I am more than willing to work with the development community to try to make this better. I do think, though, that we need to do something, we're not being very responsible, I don't think, with our soils and our community, if we just totally ignore this. But I am certainly willing to look for better answers to accomplish some of our key goals in this. The soils that we most times are left with are, are, they will support a lawn if you water it frequently. But the topsoil, I mean, there's a lot, it contributes, I know, to runoff, so there would be advantages to doing this. Whether the costs offset those advantages is hard to say. And I certainly agree with appraisal and some of the points that were made. I think there are probably much more efficient ways to accomplish this than what was laid out in some of the emails and the costs. Certainly, if you plan ahead, there are some things I think could certainly cut some of those costs. I think the issue that we have right now is topsoil gets about zero percent discussion in the development of land. It, it's just been ignored. So we need to do something to make our current situation significantly better, and I'm open to what that ends up being. But those discussions need to take place soon. This has been ongoing for months. We did have a meeting with several developers, I think it was four or five, probably six months ago, and although some of these issues were raised, and we at that time asked for input back on how we could make this better, and we essentially got no input. My feeling is that they just wanted it to go away, and they didn't really wanna discuss it. So if this opens those discussions, I'm happy to have those, but we need to do something.
Other comments?
I feel, as Steve does, that we're hearing some pushback and some reasonable things. There are things that could be done better, so I think we should engage in a conversation and not act on this tonight, but it shouldn't be a, a long process. There may be better solutions that would meet our goals, and we should, we should be certainly open to that. And so I, my only comment is that I think we should not act on this tonight, and then engage with those most affected with it, and try and work out something that is more agreeable to everybody, and that is more cost-effective, and make sure that we get the result that we're looking for within a value structure that makes sense. So those are my comments.
May I comment?
Sure.
A lot of this, of course, gonna fall back on the administration, but, I mean, if, if your group already asked for input from the development community and you didn't get any, what would you like for the administration to do on and beyond that?
I think what I would like, Mayor, is that we set a three-month timeframe in here. I would ask the council that have worked on this to be ready to meet with development community. We ask the development community, we tell them we're gonna act on this. If they don't come in and meet, they have a chance to come in. We're all over the place on finances, and I think we need to make sure that we get the financial impact to some sort of agreeable number. I mean, I've heard two thousand, I've heard twenty-five thousand, and I feel like there's someplace in between on that. But if they don't respond, then shame on them.
So who is going to make the ask, I guess, is what I'm asking. Do you want?
Perhaps, I mean, I would suggest perhaps that Baggy coordinate the developer side so that we can get a balanced input from development, the development community, and if they, you know, maybe choose four or five developers to come in. We don't want twenty developers in a room.
Baggy, the Greater Indianapolis Builders Association. Did they respond to you and your request initially?
I'm not sure that we went to them. We went to some local builders for some initial input. So perhaps Baggy is the right place to coordinate that side. I would like for Matt to coordinate our side and get a meeting set up in the near future that, where we can have some of these discussions, and I would appreciate if the builders in Baggy could come. You know what we're proposing now, and this is really not much different than what we talked about six months ago. But you know what we're proposing, come, to make it most productive, come with suggestions on how we can accomplish many to most of our goals at more reasonable cost to the development community. And that's what I would.
Very good, I think our direction is clear, thank you.
The three of you have been working on this, are you all, the three of you still willing to be part of this discussion too?
So Matt, you have the three people who would be in, if available.
But you haven't committed, you haven't created a committee.
No. No, this is just like a spring mill station. No, this is just like a spring mill station, ad hoc type thing.
Okay, is everyone else okay with the direction?
Absolutely.
With that, then let's move on to the Chatham Hills PUD Amendment Six, although this looks like Kevin Todd, it is Kevin Todd, not Caleb in disguise.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. Item before you this evening for introduction is an amendment, like you said, to the Chatham Hills Planning and Development. This is approximately 150, 153 acres in size. Subject property is located at the southeast corner of Horton Road and 199th Street, just south of the most recent amendment that went through this group to add additional land to Chatham Hills a few months ago. Property is currently zoned AGSF-1. The proposal would follow the development standards of District One in the Chatham Hills PUD, unless modified by the proposal, and there's one or two modifications in there. We don't have, we can get into the details if you have questions, but the proposal would increase the maximum number of single-family dwelling units in District One G specifically by 290 units, and it would also correspondingly increase the overall maximum number of single-family units in all of Chatham Hills District One by that same number. The item is scheduled to go through the normal PUD process and is scheduled for a public hearing at the May 8 Advisory Plan Commission Meeting. The petitioner is here this evening. They don't plan to make a presentation, but are available for questions if you have any of them. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, seeing no faces looking around like they might be asking a question, we'll move this on to APC.
Thank you.
Austrian Pine PUD. Dane.
Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the introduction of a new planned unit development, known as the Austrian Pine PUD, which will be located at the southeast corner of State Road 32 and Austrian Pine Way just west of the post office. This property is currently zoned enclosed industrial, and the proposed PUD would default to the General Business District of the UDO. Enclosed industrial zoning properties exist east and south, while the Dart Town Crossing PUD is across State Road 32 to the north, and Spring Mill Point, the employment district of the Maple Knoll PUD exists to the west. The item will receive a public hearing as well at the May 8 Plan Commission Meeting. John Davishewitz, Nelson &amp; Frankenberger is present this evening to give a brief presentation.
For the record, my name is John Davishewitz. I'm a land use professional with the law firm of Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner, Westfield Properties LLC, present tonight on behalf of Westfield Properties LLC, is Wayne Timberman, the broker for the real estate, Jim Schenover, attorney with our office. The matter before you this evening, as staff indicated, is the introduction of the Austrian Pine PUD, which is a rezon request to permit commercial, general business development of the subject parcel. The real estate, which is the subject of tonight's petition, is identified here on the exhibit on display. It's surrounded in yellow. It's approximately 12.5 acres of real estate, split between the middle. The narrower yellow line is the parcel line. There's approximately two, approximately six acre tracts. The site is generally located at the southeast corner of State Road 32 and Austrian Pine Way, on the north side of 171st, 75th Street. So, you can picture here, the post office is located at Dart Town and 32, located here, 171st Street. Tiller Court is to our south, Austrian Pine Way, and you've got the tractor supply south and west of this parcel. State Road 32 located here, Austrian Pine Way. The next exhibit is the zoning of the area, and as Dane indicated, today the site is zoned EI, enclosed industrial, per the terms of the UDO. The proposed rezon would provide GB or general business zoning as the underlying zoning. Again, where staff summarized, to our west and across Austrian Pine is the Maple Knoll PUD with underlying zoning at GB, where that parcel today is the street, which is next to the tractor supply. We've got enclosed industrial located to our east. This is the post office site, public safety, or the fire and police headquarters located right here, and enclosed industrial uses which surround Tiller Court. On the north side of State Road 32 is Dart Town Crossing, recently approved within the last year by council. That Dart Town Crossing provides for a similar format of general business zoning on the north side of State Road 32 in that vicinity. This exhibit is very similar to the Dart Town Crossing proposal. It's the concept plan. Today, we don't know what those ultimate uses are going to be on the site, but as required under the overlay, there's a corridor here for the State Road 32 path. The Public Works Department has been working with the property owner to establish an additional right-of-way for the Midland Trail. Their plan is to take the Midland Trail, move it up along the south, the north side of 175th Street, and bring it back down, because if you look at that area, there's no direct connection, because those uses within, or approximate to Tiller Court, have been underdeveloped, which don't allow a direct connection. So, we're working with Public Works to establish that, and in the future, that Midland Trail segment will be constructed along the south portion of this development. The PUD will provide for the following. These are things that the council has seen in other PUDs for general business zoning along the State Road 32 corridor. It will designate 175th Street along our south perimeter as the access road as required pursuant to the 32 overlay standards. It will address internal side yard building and landscaping setbacks. Let me give you an example. That example would be the Texas Roadhouse, which was currently our rehabbed from Don Pablo's. That building sits in and surrounded by a property line, which is their development, and the property line runs through the middle of the parking lot. The ordinance doesn't require requisite building setback or landscaping setback as that property line runs right down the middle of the parking lot, but the overall development plan, which will come in for this site, which was in the case of Texas Roadhouse, that overall development plan was not just their site, it was their site, the BMO Harris, as well as Charleston's came in all at once, and there was an overall plan for the area, which allowed individual owners to own those footprints, which would be the building, and then, under association agreement, maintain the property lines or parking lots. It'll allow, the ordinance will also allow for a 4,000-square-foot building, including hardscape outdoor seating. The council's seen that in terms of allowing for a drive-through type of restaurant to be located on the property. It would have to be something in terms of like the Taco Bell format with the outdoor seating area, or Dairy Queen. Those things have been allowed in other PUDs where the ordinance would otherwise require a 5,000-square-foot building. The ordinance also provides enhanced mechanical and utility meter screening. That's been something that's been carried along throughout the different PUDs. I believe that it's also going to be addressed in an ordinance amendment that staff's proposing this evening. In the event that this is adopted, it would be consistent with that language, and we may drop that language depending on the proximity or the timeline for the approval of that amendment by staff. It also addresses the dumpster locations. As you can see, our site has three frontages. Frontage on State Road 32, frontage here in Austrian Pine, and frontage on 175th Street. Those dumpster enclosures are typically located behind the building facade. We wouldn't have it allowed along State Road 32, but similar to other developments, those dumpsters and closures would likely be to what would be the rear, because the 32 overlay requires us to present our front door, if you will, to State Road 32. So, the dumpster enclosure may be within the parking field, but located along the 175th Street side of the property, within the parking lot. The following development on the site will adhere to the architectural design requirements of the State Road 32 overlay, and then regarding landscaping, there are some details regarding foundation plantings where you're adjacent to a drive-through, and then buffer yard adjacent to the post office. A unique situation here is the post office as defined under the UDOs and institutional use. Even though it's commercial in nature, the ordinance would otherwise require us to provide a 30-foot landscape buffer next to the post office, that side of the building with no windows, no doors, and a six-foot chain-link fence surrounding their area where they park their vehicles. In deference to the economic development needs of this site, we would rather have just a five-foot wide landscaping strip adjacent to our parking lot, as we don't believe the post office is going to benefit by a 30-foot landscape easement with multiple plantings and a six-foot berm. The, finally, in summary, the standards of the PUD are designed for the site to follow the commercial development format required by the council of other properties within the 32 overlay, to the north and east of this site, that being the Dart Town Crossing, and the other developments adjacent to Oak Ridge Road, that have been reviewed by the council over the last two to three years. We've received several requests for consideration from the council members regarding the following items. We've been asked to provide additional character exhibits showing the proposed types of architecture, providing an example of a potential layout of the site, which will provide consideration of stagger building setbacks, which we'll address as we move forward through the process, and a request for a pocket park or some other type of pedestrian amenity to serve the two trails that bisect our site, as well as the sidewalk along Austrian Pine Way. We'll address, again, these items as we move through the review process. In conclusion, the Austrian Pine PUD is being requested at this time to position the subject parcel for commercial development consistent with other properties along State Road 32, rather than under its current enclosed industrial zoning, which we believe to be inconsistent with the anticipated development character along this segment of State Road 32. And the terms of the Austrian Pine PUD, the PUD proposed this evening, is to follow the enhanced commercial architectural and site development standards expected for properties along State Road 32. Later this month, on Wednesday, April 24, we'll have a neighborhood meeting. Council will receive an email with regard to the details on that. It's going to be at the Public Safety Building on the 24th. And then, a bit of a change, our public hearing in front of the Plan Commission will not be on the first Monday of May, the 6th, it'll be on the 8th. The entire Plan Commission meeting's been rescheduled for Wednesday, the 8th, in this same location, in regards to the election to occur on the 7th. I believe they have voting machines being set up on the evening of the 6th, so they don't want a conflict there, so it'll be on Wednesday, May 8, for our public hearing in front of the Plan Commission. With that, I'll conclude. We'd be glad to address questions or comments that the council has at this time, of course, in advance of our Plan Commission meeting as well, but really look forward to moving this project forward. Thank you.
Council, questions or comments?
I'll make one.
Yes, sir.
I'm starting to get concerned about strip mall row along 32, if you start driving into Westfield from the west to the east. I hope that the designers here start taking character of their project into consideration to differentiate themselves from other places, and add some character to 32, rather than just another strip mall with a bunch of stores and frontages in there. So, I think it can be done within the standards, and certainly would set them off, but it just would be nice to have visual differentiations as we drive along that road.
No other comments? We'll move it on to APC.
Thank you.
Next item is the, Pam, again, Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance.
Thank you again, Pam Howard with Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, I have an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. The city's UDO was adopted in 2014, and it was anticipated that there would be a need to amend the ordinance from time to time to address issues that arise from application of the ordinance itself. The last amendment to the UDO was to update the signage standards in April of 2018, and the last general amendment was adopted in May of 2017. Most of the standards being addressed in this amendment are intended to clarify existing standards, with two new standards being added related to the maintenance of detention basins and the relocation of utility poles. The proposed amendment has been reviewed by the council committee on ordinance revision. This item is scheduled to receive a public hearing at the May 8 Plan Commission Meeting, and at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments from the council? Seeing hearing none, we'll move this on to APC. Kevin, you're up as yourself this time. Westfield Center, PUD District.
Thank you, and good evening again. The item before you this evening for introduction is a proposed new planned unit development for an existing commercial center located at 701 East Main Street. The center was developed under the name of Creekside Center in the early 2000s, and I believe they're looking to rebrand it now as the Westfield Center, which is the name of the proposed ordinance. The owner ultimately wants to subdivide the center into sellable lots, which is outlined on the concept plan. When this center was built, we didn't have commercial plating requirements in our community. We do now. So, going through the subdivision review process, we've identified a handful of development standards that are preventing us from being able to approve the proposed plat. So, the PUD in front of you here this evening would address all of those items for the accompanying plat. Among other things, this project will also provide the pedestrian connection to the Midland Trace Trail to the south. That was part of the Plan Commission's conditional approval back in 2003 for a development plan at that time, and that was in front of that group. Like the other items for introduction this evening, this item is scheduled for a public hearing at the Advisory Plan Commission on May the 8th, and will be back before you at a future date for adoption consideration. The petitioner has a representative present this evening. He does not plan on making a presentation, but is available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Is this the addition, or the business center that has the creek running in front of it?
Yeah, there's a rather large or deep ditch, or drainage ditch, yes, that runs in front.
That turn in and out of there is more dangerous and dangerous every month, it seems like to me. I don't know that there's anything to be done about it right now, but I think if we increase the size of businesses and number of businesses in there, we're going to have to really consider clearing that up.
Yeah, so, to be clear, they're not proposing any addition to any new structures, or any expansion of any structures at this time, at least. This is simply subdividing the property in a manner that existing buildings can be sold to different owners. But yeah, the entrance issue is certainly something we'll be looking at.
Aren't they bordered by floodplains?
Yeah, there's a lot of floodplain in the, the whole southern portion of this, that's why it's not developed, is all floodplain.
Well, we did talk at pre-council about the traffic, and I think this coupled with barbecue place across the street, I mean, all the traffic here, they need to take a look at what might be a viable solution for safety. Andy, did you say that this was one of the highest accident areas in the-
32, from downtown.
East to our jurisdiction, that is the highest accident area we have.
It is certainly worth taking a look at it to see what can be done.
Certainly. We'll coordinate with the city engineer and see if there's anything that we can come up with.
Nothing else? Move it on to APC. We have a miscellaneous business item approval of food vendors for a carnival. Kevin, I think you're up on this one, too?
Yeah, so, the folks at Village Park Plaza have a customer appreciation carnival that they would like to put on. Pretty quick turnaround here, April 11 through the 21st is their proposed dates. The proposed location is shown on the concept plan here, is in front of the former Marsh Store at Village Park Plaza. As part of the carnival, they would like to have food vendors, and the city's food vendor ordinance requires city approval for events to have food vendors if they're not on our already kind of approved list. So, that's why they're before you this evening. With that, I'd like to introduce Blake Houston, representing the applicant, and I think he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Kevin. My name is Blake Houston with Mid-America Shows. I'm the president. We're based out of Farmland, Indiana, which is just east of Muncie, so I'm before you here tonight. Our customer appreciation carnival we're having at the Village Park Plaza, we'd like to put on, excuse me, starting this week, and the food vendors that we would provide are our own concessions, same ones you see at the state fair. We provide the midway at the state fair, also the Marion County Fair, which is, you know, the food that goes along with that, elephant ears, funnel cakes, corn dogs, deep-fried Oreos. So, I'm sure it's something that everybody enjoys, so. I'm also here for any questions that anybody may have, also.
Questions from the council?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're here about-
I know you're here about the food truck issue, but I saw that in your letter, it said that you wouldn't have any fencing, and I was kind of getting concerned because there is an awful lot of traffic in that area that uses it, not necessarily for Marsh, obviously.
Sure.
For areas all around it. So what is the plan for safety there?
So along Greyhound Pass, I mean, there's the curb median there, and then we'll basically set up in a square area, and all the rides will be tight within each other, and there's fencing, obviously, around each ride, and there'll only be access into the midway for fire lane hazards, and we'll have fencing where vehicles are not, will not be driving into and out of the midway area.
Okay. It said no fencing, so that's what kind of gave me pause.
Well, sometimes at some of these events, they require, you know, fencing, it's a gated, you know, admission to get in, which there will be no admission to get in, and I think that's kind of along the lines of where that was, like the state fair, you'd have, obviously, fence where people can't walk in. But there will be fencing.
Other questions?
Do you have any plans to alternate any of the traffic flow within that plaza?
Just through the parking lots. I mean, not through any of the actual roadways. I mean, people won't be going across the parking lots like they do an empty parking lot, but.
You've noticed that.
I'm sorry?
You've noticed that.
Yeah. Yeah, I was over there this evening, and people are just zipping in and out, crossways, everything else, but they, it'll be all about that square that's there, you know, cars, that blue square, vehicles will not be able to enter and exit through that area.
Because I don't know the answer to this question, does food trucks, does the city get the food and beverage tax off these food trucks for their sales? The 1%?
Wow, that's a good question. I would guess it would depend on where they are registered, where they pay their sales tax collection. Home base.
It might be a item.
That sounds about right.
That sounds like a legislative item for future downtown. Other questions? I need a motion, I'm sorry. I need a motion on ordinance 14-06, food vendors ordinance.
So moved.
Joe Edwards moves, is there a second?
Come on, deep-fried Twinkies.
Deep-fried butter. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Steve Hoover. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Is it identified how many vendors you'll have?
Yes, we'll have four separate food trailers.
And those are from your organization, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, everything that is with us.
They're your employees?
Yes.
And the carnival rides and everything, safety inspections, our people look at those to make sure that it's all in compliance when you, after you finish setting up?
Yeah, everything is registered with the state of Indiana, have their own ID numbers through the state, and the DHS will be there Thursday afternoon to go back over and inspect any, and they have our site plan, and we're registered with the state also.
Hi, clerk, call a roll.
Okay, Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Bob Porquet.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Jim Ait.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I invite you all to come out and enjoy some deep-fried treats, too.
Thank you.
Got any cards? Cards, all right. Councilmember comments?
I give an update on last Monday, April 1st, APC meeting. APC approved a consent, two consent agenda items, which was a detailed development plan for Spring Mill Grand Station and a detailed development plan for Union Bible College Dining Hall. We also approved a Plan Commission order for the Wheeler Landing Economic Development Area, which we acted on this evening as our, in our part. There were public hearings held on overall development plan and secondary plat for, or site plan for Wheeler Landing, Section 1, Lancaster Residential Subdivision Development Plan and Site Plan. Also, the South Oak PUD Amendment had a public hearing. We did have several people speak at that public hearing. That was it.
Other comments? Okay, I have, I have one, just an alert. I've asked the mayor, I would like to have either a work session or perhaps early part of our agenda for the council, and this will be after the primary, the council and any primary victors to come in and just discuss, talk about, and get an idea about, not the Grand Junction Park. We've funded, we've passed the funding for that, but I have thoughts that we all at least ought to have an ability to express what we think the economic development around that park is going to look like, not just the area which, where there are houses to the west, but I think Grand Junction could extend all the way down along Grassy Creek and Park, Cherry Street, and down to East Street that way. And I would just like to have the council have a chance just to talk about what you see as your vision for that development and where it might go before things start coming before us that we don't really think should be part of that economic development. So it would be after the May elections, and if you have any thoughts about that, just let me know, but I think it gives us a chance to talk about that economic development. And with that.
Yeah, and if I can follow up on that, I met this week with Adam Buckler, president of the Union Bible College, and they have some pretty aggressive plans that they would like for us to be aware of. I think President Buckler has turned that institution around financially, and they would like to be more engaged in our community. They recognize that they are not, and at the same time, they are a huge part of our local history here. And his question to start out with me was simply, do you want us here or not? And my answer was, yes, we do. I think their, their history, their origin, their one central building is a gorgeous piece of architecture that needs some work, but he acts like they are willing to do so. They're investing money in their first new building since maybe 1890, I don't know. But that is one of the reasons why Mark and I were talking about, you know, I don't know that we need to revise our comp plan, but I know we are going to be receiving a lot of interest in the downtown as a result of the plaza coming to a reality. So for us to kind of give small direction would be, I think, very much in order to the development community and our existing entities. So with that said, a couple, just three other things I'd like to go over. Since we last met, I think on March 20th, we hosted the, what was the Youth Assistance Breakfast, where we honored kids that, really, one of my favorite days where we get to the teachers and principals of nominated children, not necessarily kids in our youth assistance program, but those kids that have just overcome some unbelievable odds, cancer, sickness, deaths, separations, arriving here from Honduras, you name it, and to honor these kids for their accomplishments, not only surviving here, but most of them have ended up helping others in like circumstances, and it's, it was a, once again, it was just a beautiful testimony to what youth assistance and our younger kids are doing, just like the lady you saw, the young girl with the, from the Girl Scouts and how she's giving back. I try to stay out of the State House, you all know that. I did go down on March 13th, when the initial hearing in the Ways and Means Committee, they were entertaining the beginnings of this controversy. You saw a lot of it in the paper today with the CIB funding, keeping the Pacers here, funding the soccer stadium. Do we bring in two giant hotels? I mean, this is, this is a big, big issue. My request was along those lines, but it was, it was simply this, it may not go anywhere this year, but I am trying to bring back some of the food and beverage tax that we contribute to Marion County. As you all are aware, everybody here pays a 2% food and beverage tax, of which 1% we send to the CIB in Marion County. And the idea of that some 15, 10, 15 years ago was, we need to help develop the convention sports business of downtown Indy because we suburbs, we benefit. And I think that's been very true. When you walk through some of the tubes and the parking lot or the parking garages, we help pay for them. Now we feel like with the advent of Grand Park, we are now contributing to the hospitality industry of Marion County. The idea originally was, oh, when we have big conventions, when we have large, the 500, et cetera, that Hamilton County will share in those events from a hospitality. Well, we've turned the tables, and when we have large events at Grand Park, we book a lot of rooms in Marion County. And it's time that we return some of those funds specifically to Grand Park so that we can use those funds to maintain the facility on and beyond what it is today, to make the improvements that will continue to make us the number one destination for youth sports. We made the argument, a couple of Marion County delegates obviously didn't like it very much. I would predict, I don't know that it'll go anywhere this year, but nothing happens in the legislature in year one. So we're making that approach, making that dent, and we'll attack it even larger next year, but just be aware that it is something that we're talking about. Lastly, I want to, last week, I spent nearly most of the week in Washington, DC, as I've been honored, you know, to be on this National Transportation Study Committee. Thank you for allowing me, I think this is our fourth trip out there. Officially, the committee is called the National Advisory Committee on Travel and Tourism Infrastructure. And it's, it's been a very interesting project. It's actually a committee mandated by Congress to report directly to the Secretary of Transportation on the hindrances of developing infrastructure for travel and tourism all across the country. I was actually of about the 20 members, the only elected official. Most, I was actually the only one there that with mostly highway interests, and you know I'm kind of a highway nut, most of the members were from travel associations, the head of Las Vegas Travel, Space Coast Tourism, it was the American Bus Association, American Rail, a lot of rail interest there, ports, and a lot of interest from the airlines. And really, we finalized our report and presented it to the Under-Secretary of Transportation in person. They explained to us that the secretary was a little wrapped up with Boeing at the time, so we bought that. And to summarize it, really, our report centered on a couple of things. For highway funding specifically, we all know that the funding mechanism is broken. And it's ironic, I learned just the opposite is true for airlines. If you look across America, nearly every major airport is undergoing renovations right now because their funding mechanism is very active and growing because they tax, I know that's a bad word, I couldn't use that out there, but they tax your tickets when you buy an airline ticket, and you really don't think about that, and it's okay. As you all know, highways are funded by a broken system in that we pay a tax on the number of gallons that we purchase, and the number of gallons we purchase is declining because fuel efficiency is way up. So the, whereas the travel for fund, improvement fund for aviation has like a $7 billion surplus, the fund for highways is in the, in the red by about that much. That was one of our main aspects. The other aspect that we identified as a hindrance was what we recognize across the board, and that is simply the federal process of doing any kind of improvement, be it a runway, a waterway, a highway, a rail line. The federal process costs about 25% of any project, and how that can be eliminated as we are actually experiencing in some of our highway projects right here, where we are allowed to bypass the federal process and get a project done much more quickly and less cost. But we're bucking the whole bureaucracy of the, of the US Department of Transportation. So it's been an interesting study. They've asked us to, to continue and to come up with a strategic plan this next year, so just what I did last week.
I have a motion for adjournment.
Before we do that, I just noticed a guest come in, Mr. Steve Carter. I'd like to recognize him from the stage, from the dais. Thank you for coming tonight. I think you'd like to pass out a couple of business cards to council, so if you got a minute before, after we adjourn, it'd be nice to meet with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we adjourn.
Second. Steve Hoover, Joe Edwards, all of y'all say aye?
Aye.
You are adjourned.